There's a lot happening in Washington DC. And so making sure that I am transparent and accessible to all of you has always been a priority for me, whether it's being out on my 22 county tour in the district, out doing those stops in all the counties that I represent, or at in-person town halls like this one, I think it's really, really important to be able to be in contact with you. I know virtual town halls, obviously, are something that we did when we were in Washington DC, so we try to reach as many of you where you are at all times of the day. So I have made 37 visits, including this stop already this year, in the congressional district across 17 counties, and I've already held, this is my 43rd in-person town hall since I took office, and I am looking forward to again, holding town halls throughout the district with this Congress. So first, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you in Congress. It's the honor of my lifetime to be Iowa's second district congressional representative. And people often ask me why I come into public service, and it's because I'm a mom. I've been married to my husband Matt for almost 17 years, time flies, can become fun. And our boys Max and Jax are 14 and 12 now, and we have a teenager in the house, obviously, and if you've ever watched a teenager eat, it is something to see, right? We all know it, so if you have teenage sons or grandsons, I'm sure you can relate to that. Americans overwhelmingly rejected this status quo in November because our country was going into wrong direction. High inflation, open borders, and hardworking men and women in Iowa and across the country felt like their voices were not heard by their leaders. Families in Iowa want to have safe streets, affordable groceries and gas, and make sure that their kids have opportunities to look out the American dream. And that is what President Trump and his team are delivering. The President is fighting for you, and I do think that God saved the President in Butler, Pennsylvania for a reason. He saved the President, and I believe the President is working with us to help save the country. He is deporting criminal illegal aliens rather than letting them roam our streets freely. He is ending abuses of taxpayer dollars rather than treating your money like monopoly money. He's unleashing American energy to get those costs down for working families, and he is protecting women and girls instead of trying to erase us. Under President Trump, he has actually promised everything he wants, but I think promises is the end of history. I'm not going to back down from this fight because I think it's really important, this is about the future of our country, and I also think this is about the soul of our nation. And I do think Iowa is a model for the rest of the nation, thanks to the leadership of our governor here in Iowa. Our state has prioritized education and parental involvement, lowering taxes for hardworking families and business owners, and ensuring that our communities are safe. She has transformed our state for the better, and we are blessed by her leadership. I am blessed to follow her. So I've made it my mission to make Washington DC work a lot more like Iowa. Iowa common sense, and my commitment to accessibility and transparency will continue by being a representative. And I remember the night before the President was sworn in, he said that he wasn't going to waste any time to deliver other promises for the American people. And he wasn't kidding on that, and just a short amount of time with President Trump back in the White House, he and his administration have demonstrated what it's like to have a government that listens to why people sent it there. They're available and they're working for the people. So my colleagues and I are working alongside the President and the Trump administration to undo damage that happened, frankly, we're in the President Biden years, and we are proud to be able to do that to the majority. The President alongside Congress truly hit the ground running, and I just want to start off by highlighting a few of our accomplishments so far. We've passed legislation to protect the integrity of girls' sports, and I was proud to join President Trump at the White House for the signing of a common sense executive order to do exactly that. Our colleagues in the United States Senate tried to get this bill across the finish line, but again, Democrats in Congress blocked this bill. President Trump has committed to secure our southern border. This is the number one issue that I heard about on the campaign trail last cycle from my constituents. Securing the border is critical to national security. We needed to start deporting illegal aliens with criminal track records, and we need to distance such illegal immigration, leading to record low border crossings. I am so proud of that, I agree with that. And again, as the President said, we didn't need a new law to do that, we just needed a new President. In Congress, we passed the Lincoln Act, legislation that mandates the federal detention of illegal immigrants who are accused of theft, burglary, assaulting a law enforcement officer, and any crime that causes death or serious bodily injury. Be sure to read that. This bill is a big one, Sarah's Law, legislation championed by my good friend Senator Johnny Ernst, and this is named in honor of Sarah Root, a young Iowa woman who was killed by an illegal alien. Sarah's Law ensures that illegal aliens who commit violent crimes cannot walk free in our communities. These are just common sense safety measures for the American people. And we've also taken actions to roll back binding error regulations that hurt manufacturers, consumers, and our entire economy. And we just voted on the SAFE Act to ensure that only American citizens can vote in the American elections. That is Iowa common sense. American citizens should be voting in American elections. I've also continued my bipartisan work for the American people. I've introduced bipartisan legislation to move agency headquarters out of Washington DC closer to the people that they serve through my Bipartisan Swamp Act with Maine's Representative Jared Golden. I've also worked to improve transparency at the Small Business Administration, to ensure small business owners have a clear picture of disaster relief assistance through my SBA Transparency Act. And I've reintroduced bipartisan bicameral legislation with several of my colleagues to work on anchoring our food supply chain, boost domestic manufacturing, and ensure that Communist China does not control any part of our food supply chain. This is then Iowa common sense. But unfortunately, there is a lot of nonsense, and frankly, straight up lies being spread about this common sense agenda. A few weeks ago, I was at a grocery store and ran into some constituents asking me about the reconciliation bill that's making its way through Washington right now. They were asking me specifically about the talk about the Trump tax cuts only benefiting the wealthy if they're extended. So I want to take a minute to explain that the Trump tax cuts delivered the largest tax cut to low income working families in 40 years. We witnessed the fastest two-year real growth in wages in 20 years. And the reality is that the average taxpayer in my district, all of you here who are constituents of mine, would see an average of 25% tax hike if those Trump tax cuts are allowed to expire by the end of this year. So for a family of four, making what is the average income in the district about $69,000, the tax increase would be over $1,300 if those tax cuts are allowed to expire. That's about seven weeks of groceries on average for the typical family of four. So I don't know how many of you want to pay an extra $1,300 a month, but I've heard from so many people that they don't, right? This is not the government's money, this is your money, plain and simple. And I'm going to do everything I can to help protect and extend those middle class and small business tax cuts so that you can keep that money. And I've also advocated for an increased child tax credit for working families and no tax on tips. I've been to many local restaurants and some bars recently where I've been able to talk to employees about this policy, no tax on tips, and I think it's a great way to help hardworking folks in the service industry keep more of those hard earned dollars. This is an industry that was particularly impacted during the pandemic, and I want to make sure we can help people again, keep more of their own hard earned money. Too often, and thank you, I go back to this policy, everybody's shooting for nothing. Too often in Washington DC, decisions are made by federal bureaucrats who have never had to balance a small business budget, have never stepped foot on a family farm, or face the unique challenges of living in a rural community. As a member of the House Appropriations Committee, I've advocated to slash wasteful spending while still successfully ensuring that Iowa receives resources for targeted investments, things like childcare centers, clean drinking water infrastructure, and affordable housing, while working to end abuses of taxpayer dollars and overreaching mandates. At a recent GIMR event in Cedar Rapids, I received overwhelmingly positive feedback about the work that DOGE is doing. My whole philosophy and my current approach is that we absolutely have to cut the waste, fraud, and abuse so that we can sustain key programs and investments that Iowans and Americans care about. No one has sought to tackle this difficult task head-on and see it through until we had President Trump back in office this year. I'm going to give you a couple of key examples today. His administration discovered over $300 million of SBA loans that have been given out to individuals under the age of 10, and certainly among the most aged 120. I mean, for going to say the youngest recipient of an SBA loan is a nine-month-old baby. Should nine-month-old babies be getting SBA loans? I don't think so. I think everyone can agree there is no loan or any form of taxpayer-funded benefit that should be given out to babies or the deceased unless it is a survival benefit for children, plain and simple. That is fraud, and we need to stop that, and that is why we are $36 trillion. You know what? This is my time, and we're going to get to questions in just a few minutes, so I'm happy to answer your questions, but I'd love for the people who came here to hear the update about Washington DC to be able to do that. Thank you so much. DOGE has uncovered dozens of egregious abuses of taxpayer money, such as $70,000 for a DEI musical in Ireland, $2.5 million for electric vehicles, not here in the United States, but in Vietnam, and $47,000 for a transgender opera in Colombia, to name a few. Colombia is country, not the university. DOGE has also been working to improve technology efficiencies, ensure that the government isn't paying for unused office space, and ensure that every tax dollar goes as far as possible. The federal government loses between $233 billion and $521 billion, yes, that's billion, every year due to fraud, due to inadequate data, and outdated systems. A company could never run this way and stay in business. It's absolutely unconscionable that American taxpayer money is being abused in this way, and swamp bureaucrats didn't even bat an eye for decades on this. So this month, I introduced a piece of legislation, it's called the Protecting American Taxpayers from Wasteful Spending Act, which would codify President Trump's recent executive order to improve the Treasury Department's ability to screen for improper payments and fraud. Ending these improper payments should be a bipartisan issue, we should all be able to get behind legislation that ensures your tax dollars are not improperly paid out and set down the drain. The American people deserve transparency and accountability, and I hope that we can make this policy permanent through my legislation. And the truth is, Democrats of my friends in Congress are not against the policies of DOGE. When we first launched the DOGE caucus, actually, there were several Democrats in Congress who joined. The political wins are the only things that change there, and now they're just against President Trump getting the credit for it. And don't take my order for it, I'm going to give you a couple quotes. President Obama himself said, "We would do a better job in Washington by rooting out wasteful spending." Nancy Pelosi, the former Speaker, said, "We simply must make the cuts in waste, fraud, and abuse so that the benefits and premiums are untouched." As you know, I came to Congress in the minority, and we were in divided government for several years. I am proud of what we've been able to accomplish for you in that time, in those circumstances, and my governance philosophy has not changed. I will always work with anyone who will work with me to deliver for Iowa and do what is right for our communities. And I think if you look at the bills that I've already introduced this Congress, that is abundantly clear that I've focused on results and getting things done for you. Before we open it up for questions, I just want to let you know we have three offices in the district, as I mentioned, focused solely on helping you navigate issues that you have with the federal government. From troubles with the IRS to visa and passport issues, we just had a lady who we served on casework who was trying to get off for her wedding and her honeymoon, and we were able to get her her passport recently. We also deal with PMA, so a lot of those alphabet suit agencies with the federal government. You might not necessarily think to call our office if you're having those challenges, but maybe you're waiting on a check from the IRS, that's your money, or you're not getting the right amount of social security benefits, those are the things that we can tackle to help you out. So that is what we do, we stand ready on the customer service front to be able to help you with that. I do still have full faith that the best days of our country are ahead for all of us, and I will continue to travel to every corner of the districts, be involved in our communities, and make sure that I'm hearing from you so that we can make Washington DC function more like the great state of Iowa. So that is my quick update, thank you so much. And now I am going to get to as many questions as we can before I again have to get back out on the road and continue those stops. So my staff is going to be coming around, we have two microphones in the room, so Nick here and Christina have microphones, if you'll just raise your hand, we will come to you, and Dave will be holding the microphone so we can keep moving. The one thing I want to ask is that you say your name and where you are from so we can make sure we are tracking everything and following up. So let's start right down here on the edge, and then we'll kind of work our way across if that sounds okay. And he's going to hold the thing for live, like you said. Yep, thank you.
So my name is Mark Young, I'm a lifelong resident of Mason City. During the Afghan War, Mr. Trump stated during the entire time that it was his goal to leave Afghanistan as quickly as possible, but did nothing. During the successful withdrawal of President Biden, the US arranged for the transfer of over 120,000 Afghans. You know what? She asked you to be patient, I sat quietly, you can sit quietly while I ask my question.
Go ahead, sir.
That's my principal voice, by the way.
Good job. Thank you.
We arranged for the safe transfer of over 120,000 Afghans, most of them Christians, and those who supported and corroborated in the war effort with our US soldiers. All Afghans who desired to leave Afghanistan, fearing prosecution, were eventually allowed to leave. Last week, President Trump announced that the temporary protective status for all 120,000 Afghans was being revoked and that they had to leave the country within 90 days. The answer that was given, the reason it was given is that Afghanistan is now free for Christians to live and return safely. In addition to that, there are now roughly 800,000 young men and women who came here as children with their parents, who have been attending school, working under the DACA protections under President Obama. But Congress, including you, have failed to pass any kind of bipartisan legislation to grant them permanent status. So we've got a million people here who've worked here, stayed here, and wanted to live here, and you and the Congress have not provided a method and means for them to stay here. And I'd like you to answer how you could protect those Afghans, the Venezuelans, the Cameroines, the Asians who are now being asked to leave this country along with the 800,000 Dreamers.
Thank you. Let me first start with those folks, because I do, I think we disagree fundamentally on what that withdrawal looked like. There were 13 American soldiers who died, no one's been really held accountable for what happened during that painful withdrawal from Afghanistan, so I think that Congress does need to ask questions about that and make sure that we don't have something similar happen, no matter where our future conflicts lie, right? We want to protect American lives, and we want to make sure innocent lives are not lost in that process. So I do think accountability there is really important, and we need to make sure that people who have legitimate asylum claims in the United States, that those are processed and handled effectively and properly vetted. What I do think has clouded the water on both of these issues, you talk about DACA and Afghanistan, is the illegal immigration crisis that this country has faced in the last four years. I think unfortunately, what it has also done in Congress is torpedoed the chance for us to do any form of comprehensive immigration reform. I think if there is any President who can get it done, I'm hopeful now that we've got border crossing numbers down very, very low, I think that that is a step in the right direction, and I look forward to working with my colleagues. I've introduced legislation to help with many of the visa programs that exist in the United States already, whether it's the guest worker programs, or the J-1 visa, which a lot of our skilled workforce comes in on. So I am willing to work on immigration-related issues, but first and foremost, we have to focus on deporting the people who should not be here. You talk about, you mentioned Venezuelans, but we've got millions upon millions of illegal immigrants in this country who abuse the asylum process, and that's what we saw happen under President Biden. And so the CBP One app, which was truly weaponized to allow that illegal immigration to happen, we've now turned that around, and the CBP One app is going to be used to be able to have people self-identify and self-deport who should not be here. I think it is a completely different conversation for the people who were brought here as children, and that's something I'm willing to work with my colleagues on, if we're able to get to a point where we can have a conversation on it. Right now, I think the status quo for them is working. There is also a challenge that we face for the so-called legal Dreamers, these are people who maybe came with their parents on a visa, or their parents are waiting for a green card. Many of those kids are aging out right now, and so I actually think it's probably most important to tackle that issue first. There is legislation to do that, there's probably legislation introduced to do both, but there is certainly legislation where these kids who came here maybe at age five with their parents, and now they're in college, and they're being told you have to go back home. Well, you've been here 16 years as a legal, with legal status, we should definitely be figuring out how to make sure that we find a solution there. So that's my perspective on it. I do wish we would get to a place in this country where we can have a civilized conversation around immigration reform, but unfortunately, until we tackle many of the issues that we are dealing with as a result of four years of failed immigration policy, it's going to be very difficult to have those conversations. Next question. Christina, let's go down here on this aisle right here. She's got it sorted, thank you. Maybe blue. So name and where you're from, please, thank you.
Allen Mickerson, Clear Lake. There's three levels of, when I grew up, you know, there's legislative range, there's a GSR range, executive range, they're all coeign. You're part of the legislative range. When will you and your Republican colleagues take back your legislative power to rein in President Trump? You said, you said that you're for housing. Young couples trying to build a home today in our area, throughout your district, most of that lumber comes from Canada. There's tariffs on Canada. When are you, when are you going to rein that power back in? You're losing, the executive branch is running the other two branches right now.
Well, I certainly agree with that. I think we will probably have a fundamental disagreement in this room about that, because when I look at what Congress is doing, we are working on executing exactly what we campaigned on doing and what the President campaigned on doing. I think it's important to know, you know, that over the course of decades, Congress has ceded a lot of its powers to unelected bureaucrats, and so what we are trying to do is take a lot of that power back, and I think that is really important. We are, actually, Congress has executed its power over the executive branch in the last few months. We've passed several, what we call Congressional Review Act legislation, and that is the ability to overturn something that Congress doesn't agree with the President on, and that is something that I have already worked on and passed. You know, when it comes to housing, let's have a conversation about housing. The policy that has really made housing unattainable is the fact that interest rates have been so high because we've seen such inflation in this country in the last four years. We talk about one of the key reasons where someone using their 20s or 30s can't afford to buy a home, is because the financing for it makes it too expensive. Or let's talk about the regulatory side, which is something that President Trump cares deeply about, and I do too, making sure that we can make it easier for homes to be built. I've sat down with many of our home builders, I've sat down with the groups of Realtors who are front-facing with people trying to get into these homes. The cost of new housing has gone up dramatically, not just because of the cost of lumber, but because of regulations. And I think that when you look at all of those mandates and requirements put on new housing bills, it's driving up the cost of housing faster than the rate of inflation. So I think what's really important in these conversations is where can we get government out of the way to make all of those things more accessible? How can we drive costs down so that more people can get into homes? Or affordable housing? Again, that's a place where I've been able to go through the appropriations process and secure investments, right, in places like Clear Lake, Mason City, and other communities in the district. So I look forward to continuing to work on that and work alongside the President, and I will work with anyone who's willing to work with me, as I said, to do that and make sure we're restoring power away from unelected bureaucrats, back to the people who actually can make those decisions and are accountable to you every two years. Okay, next question, let's go over here, I'm just going to try to, so Nick, if you could come down here, this gentleman in a leather jacket.
My name is Dave East, but I'm a retired attorney from Clear Lake, a multiple veteran. When I was in the Army, I had a top secret security clearance. If I had done what President Trump has done, or what Mr. Head said has been classified information, we would have been, we would have lost my clearance in the court martial. Yet these people seem to be going on, and they're putting our military in harm's way by doing so. Congress needs to step up and do something after that. And my colleagues in particular, with regard to that issue.
So Dave, thank you for that, and thank you for your service first and foremost to our country. I know we probably have a lot of veterans here today who have put their aim on the line, put their life on the line for our country, so I want to say thank you to you and all the other veterans who are helping to keep our country safe. I do think, I have a security clearance as well, right? I think making sure we're protecting that classified information is really, really important. It's my understanding that nothing that was actually classified was communicated in those channels. Do you think this is what it is? Is that we make sure, that we make sure that no classified, classified information is actually being communicated on non-classified channels? So that is where Congress's role is, in making sure we are protecting the integrity. We need to also make sure we're holding accountable the people who, for instance, are, we've seen several arrests for people who have leaked classified information. You talk about foreign wars, we had non-classified information was leaked about some other plans in Ukraine, and that could put lives at risk too, as well as American lives, right? And we don't want to see that happen either. So I would say no matter who it is, we need to, we do need to focus on accountability, but it is my understanding that the Senate is looking at this as well, and my philosophy remains the same, I just want to make sure no classified information is communicated on unclassified channels. Let's go with the back there on the aisle, right there. Right back there, right back, yeah. I'm going to try and kind of go all over here.
Hi, I'm Brian, and I actually taught Western Civ and US History and World Geography here at NIAF, back in the 90s. My parents and I moved here about 1962, and Mason City was a really thriving community, but then we had businesses move out, and it's sad to come back. I grew up in the north, or south side of town, and Sears Target's gone, walking around downtown. But what is your plan to, you know, help the workforce here and to open up more markets for the farmers in this area?
Thank you, Brian, I really appreciate the question. Thanks for being a teacher, obviously that's a tough job, and you're a radical activist, so thank you for what you do there to help educate, educate our workforce, right? That is really, really important, and I guess here we are at NIAF, right up front and center in that battle. I think making sure we, you know, as I hear from people as I'm on my district stops, it's workforce, 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 making sure that the next generation of workforce is engaged. I just was at the Kraft Heinz plant here in Mason City yesterday, touring, learning more about industrial technology, how those are really good paying jobs that need great education and good training. So I think the most important thing we can do is make sure that's still accessible in places like Mason City, in places all over rural America. You know, when you look at what they are doing here at NIAF and JOL, obviously, we were just chatting about this back there, they're looking at making investments that are going to help engage high schoolers and our young people, so that those people in the pipeline know that, number one, these opportunities are available to them, they can get that education right here, and then they can stay here and be a really good engaged member of their community with a really good paycheck. So I think that's really, really important that we continue to tell that story, and I'm happy to help highlight that through my district stops, but also through the legislation that I'm working on. One bill that I just introduced, it's actually made its way through the Education and Workforce Committee already, but it's Flexibility for Workers Education Act. And what that does is it allows our employers to offer workforce training that could help someone maybe advance their skills to the next level outside of normal work hours, so the employer could pay for that, and the employee could do that. And the employer would not necessarily be required to pay overtime if it was a voluntary option, right? So if the employee says, you know what, I'm a janitor, and I want to be able to take that next step and move up the chain, the employer could say, you know what, we're going to pay for that training and that opportunity for you, and you can take advantage of that. I think that's a really simple change to our current liberal laws that will help to advance and upskill our workforce. and upskill our workforce. On the opportunities side for farmers, because I think it was the second part of your question, you know, one of the things we have to do is have access to new markets. So when I look at, we have a trade rep, Jason Greer, who is certainly trying to advance many of those conversations and try to get us more fair trade deals around the world, which is absolutely important. America's been kind of taking a backseat on that front. And you look at what the Chinese Communist Party has done to try to undermine fair trade in the United States, they're the worst offender. They use tons of tactics to get around our trade laws. So my legislation to combat that transnational shipment and all of those tactics, it has passed, it passed the House last year. We almost had it done, but it's a bipartisan bill, a federal bill. And we need to give Department of Justice the resources they need to be able to go after those bad actors. So accountability is number one. Making sure we're actually negotiating fair trade deals is another. And then the third part of that is making sure we are providing funding for additional efforts to expand market access. So the Market Access Program funding and the Foreign Market Development funding are two areas where I have tried to get as much funding as possible. I co-sponsored legislation to double the current level of funding there. And that provision was included in, I think it was last year's Farm Bill. I'm hopeful we're able to get that done this year too. That's another conversation. But I think that that, those are both promising ways where we could help expand markets for our producers, whether you're growing something or making something here in the United States. Thanks, Brian. And then you're over here. Right there, yeah. He's next to him right there. Nope. Okay, we'll take yours and we'll go. We've got to talk.
So my name is Steve Damuth. I'm from Decorah, Iowa. Took a quick drive to get here this morning. I'm retired, retired from the technology and biomedical industry. In my last position, I worked at what you would recognize as one of the prime premier research institutions in the biomedical institution, in the biomedical. And my question here is kind of a variant of what's been asked before about when Congress is going to actually start to do their job again. But I want to put a particular twist on it. What I see from the administration, from DOGE, from the O M B and Richard Vought, and frankly, from the people who lead in Congress right now, is an absolute war on competence, a war on science, and a war on truth in order to get, and you know, and this is, and I'll put my question in a very simple term. You talked a lot about the Chinese Communist Party. You obviously care about whether or not we can compete in the world, our standing in the world, and our ability to stand up to countries like China. And my question is, how in the name of heaven do you expect us to compete and succeed in the world and lead in the world, which is what we ought to be doing? When you participated and you've come here and repeated the war on truth and the lies and you support activities like those, and the activities of O M B and firing scientists, other people who have competence? There's a war here on competence, on science, on truth. And I don't know when Congress is going to stand up and say, too much is too much. We need to have access to new leaders and some new knowledge and new abilities and what are you going to do?
Thanks, Steve, for the question. I appreciate it. It's a very important thing to do in the medical industry. When you look at the government, the federal government and the bureaucracy, especially over the last few years, we've seen just incredible growth and expansion. And we are $36 trillion in debt. I see it as one of the greatest risks to our economy, to be competitive with the countries like China on the global stage. One in four of the jobs created in the last two years under President Biden was in government. And I think that's the wrong way to grow our economy. We're talking about real growth that should be happening, let's say, in the biomedical engineering industry. So we can be competitive, but those jobs are not created through government, they're created through the private sector. So I don't want to make, I want to make sure that we're respecting taxpayer dollars, cutting through all that waste, fraud, and abuse. And I know, I gave you some good examples of that. I would much rather see that go to places that are going to incentivize that trade access and that market development, which are going to make us more competitive. And I think the point of DOGE is to make sure that those services are available to Americans long-term and even strengthen debt as programs. You know, $10 million for mail circumcision in Mozambique, or $20 million for Arab Sesame Street, Arab Sesame Street in the Middle East. I mean, come on, do you think we should be funding Sesame Street in the Middle East? Or should we be funding that for the American people? That's what I think. So I'm focused on making sure we continue to reel in that growth of government, restore as much power to the American people as we can. You know what Congress's role in this, of the Appropriations Committee? We are in charge of making sure that that spending is done properly. I have to come before you every two years, and I'm going to go through it with a scientist's comb, scalpel over sledgehammer, and make sure that we are investing where we need to be investing to be competitive. So Congress is going to reel in a lot of the out-of-control spending that we've seen in the last several years. We are going to be working in the coming months on a rescission package. That's Congress's right power of the purse to be able to go in and do that. And so we are absolutely going to do that. And then focus on making sure we're crafting an appropriations bill that respects the American people and proper oversight for these agencies as well. We have more than 1,000 agencies and programs that are considered unauthorized. That's a huge problem too, because all of these agencies need to have the authorization of the elected representatives. Even the State Department is not authorized. Of course, Congress wants to keep funding the State Department to make sure that we can have diplomats where we need them around the world. But we need to, again, go through it with a fine tooth comb and make sure that that is right-sized and fits the needs and can advance the interests of the American people. So that is what Congress's role is. That's what I will continue to do. And I will work alongside the executive branch and make sure that we are executing on the agenda that was delivered to the American people through that campaign. Seventy-seven million Americans voted for this. And that's what I'm working on. Dave. Let's come down over this, Christina, if you want to come down over here. Let's kind of go down this aisle and work our way down. Let's start right there and then we'll come down. Right behind you, actually. She's on the way. She's in the house. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
And why don't you say your name and where you're from?
Oh, Colleen Lawler, Worth County. Thank you very much for attending a town hall and for taking questions. I apologize, I haven't been able to understand a lot of what you said, but I need hearing aids or something because the background roar really makes it difficult to understand you. But I would like to thank you and ask you if you would do one thing, and that is to work on funding temporary deportation judges so that we can give the hearing to those that we wish to deport. But that was just, I think the funding would help the situation. Thank you so much. And I'd like to ask you about the Farm Bill, because I'm a poor farmer, but that, thank you very much.
Yeah, well, and let me tackle that, Colleen. Thank you so much for bringing that up. Because it is, we do have an immigration crisis that we are dealing with, the after-fact bump in this country. Ten million illegal immigrants, many of them again used the C P P one app to really bypass the traditional process. It's why I was so passionate about advocating for programs like remain in Mexico, where they had to wait before they could come in and try and do that. I think, you know, I've talked to so many legal immigrants to this country, and they were so offended by how that process went. It was easier to just go across the southern border than to go through the regular immigration process in this country. So we do have quite the backlog. And I think it's unfortunate that we are in this position due to the actions of the prior administration. I'm not sure there was enough tax money to be able to really fund all of these deportation hearings that we're going to have to have. That's why the C P P one app being turned into a mechanism to self-deport is really important. So I think that's process number one. I know the administration's priority number one is getting, as I mentioned in my opening remarks, the people with criminal records, the people who are gang members and are a danger to our community, getting those people out first. I think it's why the President's order on deportation, specifically classifying those gangs as foreign terrorist organizations, is really important because it still allows us to be able to do that. Look, we've got so many that if we had every single one of these people have an individual hearing, it would take 100 years. We don't have 100 years to save our country. So I think one of the things we're working on is, again, with these, especially with these illegal gang members, making sure that since they're classified under that umbrella of being a foreign terrorist organization, that we get them out first. And then allow for many of these people to subject war. I think that's the best half of there. But yes, we do need more immigration judges, and we need to make sure that that process is fast and efficient. And I look forward to working on making sure we have the resources where we need to go there. The other area of that that also is important, like you mentioned, the Farm Bill. So let me just talk about that, because I know that's something that a lot of people probably are interested in. We absolutely need to get a Farm Bill done. These extensions are unacceptable. I wrote a letter to our leadership, signed by more than 140 of my colleagues in Congress, trying to urge our leadership to move forward with the Farm Bill last year. We can't afford to wait. Food security is national security, and I think that's absolutely paramount. So again, to Brian's question about the trade deals, right? The MAP and F M D funding was included in that Farm Bill. My legislation to push back on California's Prop 12, which would limit how Iowa producers can raise their paws, was included in that piece of legislation. My bill to help our farmers expand access to precision agriculture equipment, which obviously we know we want to do more with less, we have to do more with less because those input costs are so high, that was included in the Farm Bill. We also know that the safety net programs that exist for farmers are in that bill. So I think it's of utmost importance that we don't kick the can on that and Congress gets the Farm Bill done. So I stand ready to support that as soon as we can get it out of the House Agriculture Committee, then things will be good. So thanks, Colleen. So we're, I'm going to alternate some of these. Let's go down here and, I'm going to alternate sides and not everyone there. So right, right there. Thank you.
My name is Mariana Osvaldes. I want to know if Medicaid will be cut. A person with disabilities wouldn't offend me.
Well, thank you for that question. And I appreciate that. You know, the most important thing about Medicaid is it goes to people who need those services, right? And I think that there is a lot of fear mongering around this issue. And I think it's really important that you all know that our priority in Congress is making sure, as I said, we root out that waste, fraud, abuse, and we make sure that these programs are preserved for the people who truly need them. There are a lot of efficiencies, there are a lot of efficiencies that can be found, and there's a lot of technology that can help us do that. That's one of the things that DOGE is actually working on, is making sure our government agencies can talk to each other and be more effective. The amount of improper payments that went out for Medicaid, it's in the billions and billions and billions of dollars, right? We have to make sure we're finding those inefficiencies, making sure that those programs can go to people like you who absolutely need them. I just was at an organization yesterday, I think it was yesterday or maybe it was the day before. I've been on the road a lot this week, but in Black Hawk County called Exceptional Persons. And it is an organization that specifically helps those with disabilities to make sure they're getting the services that they need, but also making sure that they can get a job, right, and be employed in the community. And so hearing from Brian, who was one of their clients, who they brought in to tell his story, he was actually able to, and he suffers from, he said, generalized anxiety disorder, I think, and then he also had some sort of a schizophrenic disorder, right? So his biggest thing was making sure that he could live in a safe home with other people so that he had that supervision, and also to make sure that he had compliance with his medication. Because that is what made it so that he could continue to be an active member of the community and do his job. So again, those are the people, people like you, people like Brian, who I want to make sure can continue to access those services. And again, our whole plan is to make sure we're rooting out that waste, fraud, abuse in all government programs, including Medicaid, to make them more efficient and be able to deliver those services for the American people. Okay, let's go over here. So the gentleman's standing, so where's, and then I'll come back to, he's got that service dog, so I don't know if she'll be. Thank you, sir. I can hear you. Thanks for your patience.
Not a problem. I got the whole day. That's okay. I'm actually loud enough that I don't need a mic, but in order for you to make sure that you hear, I want you to understand that I come here, my name is Sean, that's an Alsey, I grew up Cedar Rapids. I drove from Cedar Rapids because I called your office and asked a question, never got a response or an answer. And then I called into your town hall, asked my same question, never got a response, and you didn't answer the question during that timeframe. So I felt the only way I could actually get an answer was to talk to your face. And as far as my background, I'm a U.S. Army retired. I first joined the Army in 1990, my first time in Iraq was back in 91, and then I went back again for Victory Day for OIF a couple more times. But just to, so you understand my background as a veteran. So I'm retired from active duty like this. And I work at the VA now. And I've been working at the VA for a little while, but when the new administration took over, they started off with, I was telebooking from my home, it was about a half an hour drive to the Iowa City, because I worked at Iowa City VA, doing travel reimbursements for the veterans, as well as myself being a veteran. But because of, I can't remember which executive order, they did away with telebooking, something that your friend in the Senate seems to be pushing with the narrative that we were all sitting around doing nothing while we were telebooking. I wasn't sitting around doing nothing. So I take somewhat an offense to when she makes those statements, and she referred to it as cushy jobs. And I defend myself and my position there in my work. But I, my question is a little bit more convoluted, because then they started off with the fork in the road email that everybody from O K on the Senate that worked in the federal force saying that you can resign now and continue on getting paid until September, which, you know, like, that seems somewhat incompliant with the idea of efficiency when you have all these people that you tell them to go home and sit and still get paid. And now the people that are remaining, we have to pick up their workload because they put in a hiring freeze for 90 days. But even then, they're still on our books, so we can't hire anybody until after they actually get taken off of our books in September, which, oh boy, that's so much fun. I have to work doubly because we lost three people in my section. I work in the business office, so I'm not, I'm not a medical guy, but I work in the hospital. So yay. But after that, then they start firing everybody that's on probationary period. Do you understand that? For anybody that isn't here, probationary period isn't a negative thing, it's just when you get hired at the VA or most government jobs, you work there for a year just to see if it's okay. And they fired them for cause, which means they did something wrong, but they didn't. So the A F G, the American Federation of Government Employees, that's the union for the government employees, took them to court because they found it to be illegal. I thought it was illegal, but I'm not a lawyer, I'm just a retired Army officer. So they took them to court. Well, I know the Supreme Court said it's okay for them to be fired until after it's litigated, but they didn't say it was all right. They just said to figure out whether or not the litigation, he's not bothering you, is he, okay, the litigation had to finish. So they're still fired, but it's still in court. But after that, next executive order, our President, he put out an executive order dissolving the collective bargaining agreement, the contract between the federal government and the workers like myself for national security reasons. That's the contract that was supposed to protect workers like myself and all the other people that were fired that could be illegal, they could be not illegal, depending upon. And my question to you or your office was, where's my representation? Because right now, the judicial branch doesn't seem to be getting very far. I'm concerned about my job because what's next? If it goes through court and then they can arbitrarily just fire anybody because they feel it's time, even though there was a contract. But to me, I'm like, what do I know about national security? I'm only a retired Army officer with a master's in Homeland Security. So my question to you, because I feel my representation, both my senators and my House Rec, haven't said a damn thing about all this. Because I don't see the executive orders as being legal, I see it as an abuse of power. And if all he's doing is pushing executive orders. And understand, I know this is within my self-interest, there's plenty of other complaints I have about plenty of other executive orders, like due process, some of the stuff that I've seen. I've seen in reference to that. And I don't see anybody giving me a valid explanation of why, we haven't heard anything from anybody in Congress to put it down, because to me, I see plenty of abuses of power, but my question remains about me, because I have self-interest, because I don't want to lose my job, you know? I work there, I like working with the veterans, you know? I do go in once a week, and the rest of the days, but now I go in all the time. And to me, I'm like, that's, that's my time that I have to dedicate. When I originally signed up to do the job, I didn't have to drive into work every day, I could flip on my computer at home, and I could be just as productive there. But apparently, according to the Congress, my representation, maybe you haven't said it, but your friend in the Senate has said it many times, about how we have cushy telework jobs, and it just pisses me off. And to me, I'm like, I don't see any reason other than somebody's personal, what they want to happen, because they want to look like they're doing something, and I disagree with it. The federal, especially in the VA, you know what the percentage of people that work in the VA are also veterans? There's plenty of them that I know, and they, they work plenty, I mean, the term in the VA is serving those who served, and I take it to heart.
Thank you for asking. I don't want, I don't want your thanks in reference, Joel, I want you to do something else. I'm going to answer your question, I just want to make sure that I have time to answer that, because we have limited time here, and I appreciate you for coming. Thank you, and I do want to make sure that every veteran who comes back from service as a civilian, as a civilian, has a good job, and I will work with anyone who's worked with me on that to help support veterans, and I want to thank you for not only your service to our country, but for working for the VA. I think it is absolutely critical that we do have veterans working at our veterans' care system. What is sad about the VA is it's become a huge, huge bureaucracy, right? And we do have a lot of bloat at all of our government agencies. I want to make sure we're providing the services to veterans and being able to do that in a very targeted way, an efficient way, and I think one of those efficiencies is respecting taxpayers in this process. I think there are lots of really, really good government workers who are doing their jobs just like you every single day, but I do think people need to be showing up and working, enjoying them in person. We saw so many years where, and I'm sure you were doing your job really well, but we did have a lot of people who were not. We had a lot of people who were taking advantage of that opportunity. We did have a lot of people who were taking advantage of that opportunity, and so what I'm hopeful is, is that we can do a full look at everything, make sure we're finding those efficiencies, getting people back to wherever, what we need to be doing to be able to provide those services to taxpayers. And then if there's a way where we can work on accommodations, especially for someone like you who might need that, we have a lot of veterans who have PTSD and other conditions that might make it really hard for them to show up for a job every single day, and so if we need to be working with our secretary, Doug Collins, on that, I'm happy to do that. But at the end of the day, taxpayers expect taxpayer-funded workers to show up for the job, and that's exactly what I think the intent of our legislation is to do. Thank you. Okay, next question. So I've got a lot of questions that I got to get to, and I will...
My question is about mine protection, your collective bargaining, and how it's removed from my protection, or for my protection by an executive order, national security. Do you think that that shouldn't be allowed? Like I said, I don't think this is, I...
I'm happy to have a follow-up conversation with you about that, and I will take your number down, and I pledge to give you a phone call myself. I just want to make sure we get to all these issues, and I will have a follow-up conversation with you. And this is our last question, let's turn to this one. So, last question, I was going to call in for a guy there, so, right there. Thank you, Matt, for your patience.
Thank you. My name is Lynn Stace, I live here in Mason City, Iowa, and I'm a pro-graduate from IAC. I have, this was my third attempt to get you to answer this question. I also tried to do it on the town hall and through an email. I will be turning 65 this year, so for the past year, I have done extensive research to determine what is my best healthcare option as far as traditional Medicare versus the Advantage Plans. And from what I have learned, the only advantage to an Advantage Plan is for the insurance companies to protect our money. Traditional Medicare, if a person doesn't use the allotted amount that the government thinks they may, that stays in the Medicare fund. If you have an Advantage Plan, the difference between what is allotted for you to use and what you actually use goes into the Advantage Plan insurance companies' pockets. You talk about waste, fraud, and abuse, it is the Advantage Plans. And it's my understanding that Donald Trump and his administration want to eliminate traditional Medicare in favor of only Advantage Plans, and I would like to know from you, yes or no, is that true?
I don't believe that's true, and I think the most important thing that we can do is lower the cost for everybody, and, you know, if insurance is driving that, we should be taking a look at it. It's exactly why I have co-sponsored legislation like the Lower Cost for Transparency Act, which goes through a lot of the areas that you're talking about that drive those costs and allow a lot of that to happen. We had a really good PBM reform bill, right? You talk about people in the middle who are driving up those costs, not just for a Medicare Advantage, but for all of the healthcare spectrum across the world, across the United States. So more transparency on drug pricing, more transparency on costs for those exams, making sure we're going through the pre-authorization process, so that we're eliminating the denials that keep happening. Doctors are complaining to us about that a lot in Congress, but those are some of the ways where we can help drive those costs out, so that you can choose the plan that you want, I think that's really important. I do think there's a lot of fear mongering out there around Medicare and Social Security and Medicaid, and I think that's really a shame, because these are programs that the American people know and trust and need access to and have need to. So I think that is absolutely a priority, and Congress is working to strengthen these programs and make sure we're protecting consumers of healthcare along the way. My main goal going forward in any legislation we work on will be transparency and lowering those costs. So I will also get your phone number and make sure we have a follow-up conversation when we have a little bit more time. So thank you so much for coming out today, I appreciate the opportunity to take your questions and hear directly from you. As always, we put, we do notice these town halls in our newsletter the week before, so if you haven't subscribed to that, hinson.house.gov. It's an honor to serve you in Congress, and thank you so much for coming out today.